Council-appointed member of the Plan Commission and also the acting chairperson in Mayor Blazer's absence. Kyle, you want to go ahead and do a quick roll for us, please?
Certainly. As you noted, Mayor Blazer is excused. Ryan Austin.
Present.
Lee Tao.
Here.
Eric Daven.
Here.
Susan Pith. Ben Gudrow.
Here.
Ted Kubaschak.
Here.
We've got six members, which is a quorum. Thank you.
I believe we also have some folks on Zoom. Are they able to announce names, please?
Hi, my name is Rick Katz. I'm with K Civil Engineering for the Title Wave Car Wash.
Is that all?
Is that it?
Okay. All right, moving on. Item one, approval of the report from the February 6, 2023 Plan Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will go to vote. All in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item two, Plan 22-000177, James Gannigan, request for a site plan review to construct a Hawaiian tanning studio at 620 Airport Avenue, parcel ID 3413366. Kyle?
Thanks. I'm going to turn it over to Kerry to give a brief synopsis of the request.
Thank you, Elder Austin and members of the Plan Commission. So this item on 620 Airport Avenue, as many of you probably remember, the property underwent a rezone in July of 2020 from R3 multifamily medium-density residential district to B3 neighborhood commercial district. And then this item was before the Plan Commission for Site Plan Review in April of 2022. And at that time, the item was postponed by the Plan Commission due to the incompleteness of the application. And the applicant is proposing the same use. And I just want to note that she did mention before the meeting that it's cited as Hawaiian tanning studio in the staff report, and they are wanting to change their name to Light Therapy Center. So just to note that throughout the presentation, it's noted in the application. It doesn't change things from a Plan Commission standpoint because it still would be considered a general services use under our Chapter 11 zoning, but just to note that. And this is a permitted use in the B3 neighborhood commercial district. And because it's a new commercial building construction proposal, a site plan and architectural view or required to go before the Plan Commission. So these are site photos. These are actually taken in the spring of last year, but it's nice without the snow, just to kind of note that it is near the Walgreens site. It's a large vacant lot now. And they have really done quite a lot of work since the last time you saw this application. As I said, the Plan Commission had asked that it be postponed due to the incomplete nature of the application. And they have really put a lot of thought and time and attention into this application. So we do have very detailed drawings at this time. One of the items you'll probably remember from last time, well, there were several items, but one of the items was that more than 50% of the required parking was in front of the building. I want to note there are two special exceptions that are included in this proposal. One is to exceed the parking minimum by over 15%. And the second is to allow up to 50% of that required parking in front of the principal building. As the B3 standards are, you can go up to 35% and then up to 50% with a special exception from Plan Commission. So as you can see, the building is situated toward the residential, you know, away from the Walgreens. The parking would be to the side of the structure and to the, in front of the structure, kind of split almost 50/50. They are showing two ADA parking stalls as part of the proposal. And there is, there are, there's one, I believe, interior parking space also included. And these are building elevations showing the new design. Last time, this was still kind of undecided. There were some specifics, but not nearly to this degree. So they are meeting the architectural requirements. And then the landscape requirements, they have provided a pretty extensive landscape plan as part of the proposal that includes a buffer yard because, again, they are adjacent to residential property. And they have a nice buffer yard area proposed with a fence. They are also showing sufficient foundation plantings, parking lot plantings, and frontage plantings, which are all required with this project. And then, again, the architectural design, they have contrasting stucco. They have some planters that'll be built into the front area. And then there are canopy elements that are actually supported. It's a true canopy, which is in contrast to the design that was proposed previously. So we are suggesting a recommendation with conditions. There is a floodplain area to the rear of the building, and engineering has just asked that they show a stormwater management plan. And I believe the applicant has been in contact with engineering about this, and they are working on what's needed, and they're in the process of providing that. There's also a requirement that a sidewalk be installed. There is, on the lighting plan, there's a detailed lighting plan that was submitted. They are in excess on the side adjacent to the residential property. It's staff's opinion that with the buffer yard, with the fencing, that that'll be mitigated. If it weren't sufficiently mitigated, they would have to verify that they're under these standards once they cross over that residential property line. And there's another condition, so there's another condition regarding lighting. There's no development, of course, permitted in the floodplain area. And then just the kind of two standard conditions that we attach to many applications, five and six. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the Commission.
Thank you, Kerry. Questions, comments by Commission?
Mr. Chair, I'll ask a question. It was my recollection that on the first pass before the Commission, the building was located closer to the Walgreens facility, and now it is moved up against the west edge of the property, and the parking is now
Correct.
adjacent to the Walgreens. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep, yep. To meet the requirement, they were kind of debating, I think, between which side worked better. And they decided that with the headlights and with traffic, it was better moving it to the commercial side, and then, you know, having the buffer yard mitigate along the residential side.
I also had a question. On one of the pages, it said about a fence being installed. I'm on page 21 of the packet. On the west side there, is that fence part of their, part of this approval, or do we need to add that?
That's a good point. I mean, it's included in the plan, so we have it verified with the plans. But it definitely could also be added as a condition, you know, that the fence be installed with the buffer yard if we wanted to add that. But it is part of the plans that were submitted and that will be approved by you tonight, so. Or approved or whatever your determination is.
Yeah, I can, are there questions? I can make a motion to approve Plan 22-177 as presented with approval or with staff recommendations, adding a number seven to have that fence, privacy fence installed on the residential west barrier.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will go to vote. All in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations. Please state your name and address.
I'm Jane Shihatsky, and I am the one who has worked with Kerry and Kyle on this whole project right from day one. So just so that I have it right, that what you have approved is with, like she said, we worked really hard and made a lot of changes and stuff. Everything that we have changed has been required by the city. Everything even Susan had mentioned about that the building isn't even in the same spot, that violates our constitutional rights as far as Amendment Number Five for our control of our property. So with that being said, I am, can I, I have something to give everybody. Can I approach? Okay. And there's that. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. Item three, Plan or Item 23-000081, the Hannah Center Incorporated, a public hearing in action on a request for a conditional use permit to operate a temporary residential shelter at 1320 Pepper Ave., parcel ID 3412666. Kyle?
Thank you. So the item before you, as you noted, is for a temporary residential shelter in a B2 district, which is a commercial district. We've been working with the Hannah Center and their representatives who are here tonight to find a location for this shelter. I think this is probably the third or fourth location that I'm aware of, and probably the closest to fit their needs as they've come across. And what it ultimately is, is a women in crisis center that would also permit their children and provide some level of counseling to help get them back on their feet and find some permanent housing for them eventually. So again, it falls under our definition of temporary residential shelter, which, again, requires this conditional use. In looking at the conditional use permit standards, we feel as though the site accommodates the use very well. It's a very large property. It's an existing building. You can see from the plans that they plan to have common space on the top floor and then four bedrooms for the occupants or the patrons on the bottom floor. In addition to that, they have an accessory use where they operate a donation center, and they take donated items and then make them available to members of the public. That would also occur in, I believe, the first floor and one of the side rooms. And again, they also have onsite parking to accommodate the use. With that being said, again, we feel as though that the conditions of approval or the review criteria are met and would recommend approval with a few conditions that was noted on page one of the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the applicant is here to provide some more feedback as well.
I think we'll move right into the public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing at 4:14 PM. We'll call out first for those in favor. We'll call out three times in favor and against. So is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the Hannah, the Hannah Center project?
Hi, my name is Brian Springer. I'm actually a real estate agent in town, and I've been working with the Hannah Center for about four years. And recently, I have joined the Board of Directors for the Hannah Center in Marshfield. I'd like to speak, I guess, in favor of this project because I think it's very needed in our area. One great thing about the Hannah Center, I think, is we are completely donation-based, taking grants and donations from the public. We are not government-funded at all. The other things, too, is a lot of the questions or pushbacks that we get is, do you overlap with the Family Center or like Mary's Place that is going in currently? We don't overlap much, if at all, with those. In fact, we would plan to work in conjunction with them, where the Family Center is more of an emergent care, locked facility. The Hannah Center is free to go as you need, and it's more of an application-based, where the women would apply for residency at the Hannah Center. And they are accepted into the home, which is a home atmosphere. And then they put, they're put together into a goal-based program that roughly lasts about a year. And then, once that year is over, they hopefully graduate into getting their own housing. During that time, they are put into life skills courses, which help them understand what they need to. And it's dependent on the woman as well. There's resume courses, financial courses, parenting courses, things like that. They do an evaluation when the women come in, figure out if you're good at something, we're not going to continue to teach you how to do that. But if you're not good at something, how do we supplement that? So I think it's a very good, how to get people back on their feet and become self-sustaining members of society once they leave. So I'm very in favor, obviously. Four years ago, I didn't know the Hannah Center existed. And trying to, I guess, I was trying to sell the church at the time and got to know them, went and toured the place, and fell in love with the cause. So it's a really good cause, and I think it would do central Wisconsin, not only Wisconsin Rapids, but central Wisconsin, good to have the Hannah Center have a second location in the area.
Thank you. And is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the Hannah Center? Please state your name and address.
My name is Kristi Nowinski. My address is 3930 Cliff Street, Wisconsin Rapids. I'm the program coordinator for the Hannah Center here in Wisconsin Rapids. And I can also say that I personally was somebody who would have needed a place like the Hannah Center. About 11, 12 years ago, I was a single mom, and I was in crisis. And so thankfully, I had parents that I could go to. But many women do not have that option. You know, my parents were able to teach me life skills that I had lost because of the situation that I was in. And I was a college graduate. I had, I had the tools and everything in my belt, but because of my situation that I was in, I did not have that. And I needed someone to come alongside me, to teach me things so that I could provide for my children, so that I could be someone who could contribute to the community that I was living in. And so that's why I am in favor of the Hannah Center. I look at the longevity of this program that has been in Marshfield, and knowing that there's about 200 women who have, whose lives have been impacted by this. And if you think about the ripple effect that that has on children and that has on the community in and of itself, it's life-changing. And so I believe that our community needs this. I've been in Rapids now for almost nine years, and coming from the Appleton area and seeing, seeing what we have to offer. The Family Center is a great place, and yes, they, they help women and children who are, you know, coming from abusive situations. I will be meeting with Sue, the director there, actually on Wednesday, because we need to collaborate with community partners as well. They do really great working in the area of domestic abuse. The Hannah Center is going to be focusing on women coming from all areas of crisis where their physical safety is not in jeopardy. So, and the same thing with First Choice Pregnancy Resource Center, where we will be able to partner with these other nonprofit organizations and really arm, arm and arm together in helping people within our community. So I'm definitely in favor of this and see that it will be a huge benefit to our community.
Thank you. And is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the Hannah Center? Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak against the Hannah Center? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the Hannah Center? And third and last time, is there anyone that would like to speak against the Hannah Center?
Ryan? I do want to note, they weren't against or opposed to it or in support of it. But I did have a call with Dan Kaziski, who owns the property at 1211 Pepper Avenue. He wanted to clarify that. Again, he's not opposing it currently in its current state, but he is weary of future expansion.
Thank you. Noted. Okay, we will close the public hearing at 4:20 PM. Commission, questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion?
Question?
Susan, go ahead.
I am interested in knowing what the hours will be that there would be some residential person, a staff person in the building.
So, so we will have a staff person in the building at all times. That way, the women and children are definitely safe, and then they are held accountable to the guidelines that we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll just say, I think this is, this is a need in our community, and I'm happy to see folks and an organization like this take interest in Wisconsin Rapids. All right, we'll move to vote. All in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Item four, 23-000100, TWAS Properties LLC, request for a site plan and architectural review to construct a car wash at 1110 East River View Expressway, parcel ID 341176A. Kyle?
Thanks. I'm going to turn this one over to Kerry. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to mention, I forgot, on the Airport Avenue project, there was one phone call in support on the previous item, on item number two. So the item before you is a site plan and architectural view to construct a car wash at 1110 East River View Expressway. The map, the aerial map on the slide right now is showing it's a newly constructed kind of out parcel at the edge of this commercial shopping center. So this is a newly created lot. And that was through certified survey map process, and the applicant is proposing a drive-through car wash defined as a vehicle service shop under Chapter 11 zoning. This is a permitted use in the B2 commercial district. So again, this is just for a site plan and architectural review and not a public hearing item. And this is the site plan showing the building. You can see it at the, at the top of this orientation, and it will be a drive-through, a one-way drive-through as you enter from a private drive within the shopping center, turn to the right, and circulate through the car wash, exit, and then have the option to vacuum or to leave the site. There are two small accessory structures. One is a, or one accessory structure in the form of a pay kiosk. It's going to be a two-lane. As you go through the one-way, you can, you can drive through in two lanes. So there is some area for queuing, as you can see, prior to entering the car wash. This will be, as I said, newly created lot. It'll be curved, so it'll be an interior feel when you're circulating through this parcel. So because it's new construction, it follows the typical landscape requirements, architectural requirements, all the things that we would typically see on a vacant lot, even though it's an interior parcel within the commercial shopping center. These are new elevations that were just handed out prior to the meeting. The first elevations, because the exit faces, the exit would be the elevation on the top right, is the one that faces the public street. And they are asking for a special exception. I'll go into that in a minute, because it's an overhead door facing public street. We weren't completely happy with what was submitted originally because it was kind of like the worst elevation, so to speak, because it was the exit. So they have enhanced that a little more, or I'm sorry, it's in the upper left. I meant to say upper left. They've enhanced it with some more stone to carry through the facade, just to make it a little more inviting elevation that will face that public street. So looking at the analysis, the use is permitted and dimensional standards are met. Ingress and egress from the private, from the internal private drive is sufficient. They've provided a pretty extensive landscaping plan, has a nice mix of materials. They have some really nice variety of tree shrubs, et cetera. It'll provide a nice aesthetic, especially with that area that's really heavily asphalt. And it'll be nice that it's close to the public road. Again, and this was prior, so staff had requested architectural enhancements, and they did provide those. Lighting standards are met. There are two special exception requests included in this application. One is relief from an architectural standard that does not, that prohibits overhead doors facing a public street, which that exit will. A couple mitigating factors, they have improved the facade. There's also a nice landscape area built out that'll help buffer that as well. And then they're also asking for relief to allow over 15% of that required parking minimum. We're in support of that just because the use is a little unique and that you have vehicles that park temporarily to vacuum. You have, with car washes, you have times that car washes are a lot more heavily utilized because of weather conditions and et cetera, et cetera. So it makes sense that they would know their own parking needs well, and that vehicle service use is a real broad designation. So we're in support of that. So we are recommending approval with conditions. We're asking that directional signage be installed because there are some one-way areas and some two-way to differentiate that. The accessory building and refuse enclosure, we want those to match. And they did submit elevation showing that they matched. We just wanted to reinforce that, that they're not kind of an afterthought. There, there were a couple landscaping issues that, that has been since corrected. And then the light fixtures and just our standard conditions, five and six. And I'll turn that back over to the Chair.
Ms. Kerry, questions, comments by Commission? Go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, for either Kerry or Kyle, I don't know why I'm having a hard time looking at this map, but the, there is no exit onto the expressway, right? They're not creating a new exit. They're going to be utilizing the existing one, and somehow the cars are coming back around.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, it's the main, it's that kind of main entrance in front of the Shopko. So they'll come in that, and they'll take a left. It'll be an interior drive, and then they'll circulate through the site, and they'll leave the same way. It'll be that same private drive, ingress and egress.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question with regard to signage. I don't see anything in the requirements with regard to signage and on the elevations on, on either end with the overhead doors. It shows two proposed signs, I guess. Are those included in our approval, or does that come before, is it a separate occasion, or are they permitted by code without any approval?
So that's a good point, because the signage is not being approved as part of this. It is something that, that they had originally thought and did submit. They were showing a ground sign, which would not be permitted as, as we have it noted now because there's an existing, or proposed and an existing ground sign along that same frontage. So the signs would be approved separately at a future date and are not being approved as part of this. If, if the Commission was more comfortable adding a condition, you know, clarifying no signage is approved as part of this application, that would be, I mean, that would be fine, if that would kind of provide some added confirmation.
Well, I guess the additional question then, Kerry, would be, as you see these things, they're probably drawn to scale. It's too small for me to read. Are, are they within the parameters of our, our current sign regulations?
Yeah, so our, our current code requires 15% of the facade area or the signable area. In looking at this, I would say that the, the wall signs, I believe is what you're inquiring about, would fall within that 15% requirement. And those wall signs would only be an internal review. The review that Kerry was talking about would be if they wanted a second freestanding sign or a sign exception for that freestanding sign.
I had a follow-up question, Eric. To signage, is the current Shopko sign, that really tall one, is that on this parcel?
No. So it's, it's a, actually, I think it's a jut-out, as I recall, or it's, it might be, it might be right on the border. We'd have to pull up an aerial map to...
I actually don't know if there's going to be a concern with, is it that an off-premise sign then with this one, or if it's not included, then that's fine?
I, I think it does fall on the property, or it's, I mean, it's, it's pretty darn close to where the property line ends. If you go back, Kerry, to the, the aerial photo at the beginning, might be kind of hard to see. You can reference the aerial photo in your packet. You can see in the top-left corner of the site is that existing Shopko sign, and it's pretty close to the edge of pavement and the edge of the driveway.
So would that be allowed to stay for the other businesses?
It would be allowed to stay, yes. It'd be considered a non-conforming sign. On a non-conforming sign, you can swap the cabinet face, but you can't add anything unless, you get a sign exception, which you should be familiar with because you granted two of them last month. This was not one of them at this location, though.
Thank you.
I should say too, the applicant is on the call if there are any questions specific for him.
I could also just point out too, that the sign package that was shown and submitted is more of a general package with options. So we can coordinate with the city to kind of get something that will work, that makes sense to your code, that you guys like. This is just an array of a few different options that are possible that we typically will put in, but it's by no means the final sign. You know, if you'll notice, there's a couple different options on there.
Go ahead, Ted.
Kyle, as a follow-up on this, I know that that parcel has water to it, or at least there is some kind of lateral because that's where the old flower shop used to be for ShopCo. But is that a potential concern that we have? Is it an actual lateral coming off of the expressway or is it being fed from the original ShopCo building? Or, you know, I guess, am I even asking a question that shouldn't even have a concern about?
No, I think it's a good question. When ShopCo, the developer of ShopCo submitted a survey to break this parcel out, and this was approved six, eight months ago by plan commission, the developer actually reached out to Water and Light and got it quoted to do a new lateral there. So it is possible to serve it through the expressway with a new lateral. You might be right, though. There might be one that's undersized there for that previous garden shed building. I believe they'd be looking at a new one, though, in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by commission?
I'll make a motion to approve with the recommendations by staff.
And I'll second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. All in favor respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on. Item five, number 23-000083, City, Wisconsin Rapids, public hearing and action on a request to permanently zone four recently annexed parcels located at 2420 Saratoga Street, 2440 Saratoga Street, and 2450 Saratoga Street, and 2620 Saratoga Street. Town parcel ID numbers 0700279, 0700279B, 0700279A, and 0700278 to B5 Mixed Use Commercial District. Kyle?
Thank you, Chairperson. In this case, the item that's before you shouldn't be new. It involves the new dog park, which is recently annexed. There were four parcels that were annexed previously. When we annexed the parcels, our municipal ordinance allows us to temporarily zone it. We temporarily zoned it to B5. So either at the same meeting or at a subsequent meeting, we have to come back and we have to do the permanent zoning. In this case, we usually do it in a two-step approach, so now we're back to do the permanent zoning. As you can see on the screen, when we rezone a property, we reference the city's Future Land Use Map, in this case, which identifies the mixed-use commercial, I'm sorry, what you're seeing up there is actually the zoning map. The Future Land Use Map, I believe, identifies this to be commercial. So a B5 zoning classification would be consistent with the comp plan and would be fitting with the surrounding zoning. Therefore, we are making that recommendation to permanently zone it as such. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open this item up for public hearing. I'll call three times for those to speak in favor and those to speak against. The public hearing is now open at 4:35 PM. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the permanently zoning of the four parcels? Please state your name and address.
My name is Bruce King. I live 11120th Place, Wisconsin Rapids. I'm here representing my property that I own on Saratoga Street at 31025th Street North. I currently have 298 feet on Saratoga Street, which is directly right across from two of the properties you're going to rezone, and I'd like to speak in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this plan?
Ryan?
Kyle?
I just want to submit an email for the record from Ken and Sarah Reeves, who are at 2331 Saratoga Street, who are in support of the rezoning request. And again, we will place this on record. Thank you.
And for the last time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak against the rezoning request? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the rezoning request? And lastly, is there anyone that would like to speak against the rezoning request? Okay, we can close the public hearing at 4:37 PM. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. All in favor respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to item number six, number 23-000095, City, Wisconsin Rapids, request for site plan review to establish a dog park at 2420 Saratoga Street, 2440 Saratoga Street, 2450, or 2540 Saratoga Street, and 2620 Saratoga Street. Town parcel ID number 0700279, 0700279B, 0700279A, and 0700278. And parcel ID numbers 3410668 and 3410669. Kyle?
Thank you. So the site plan review incorporates those six parcels, or is it seven? Nope, six. Six parcels and additional right-of-way that was annexed. And the parcels will actually be combined into one parcel that'll occur internally and then that right-of-way will also be dedicated. So the dedication for that right-of-way will come back before this body. I just wanted to note that for those questioning the six parcels in its current form. With regards to the dog park location and the need, our recently created 2022 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan does identify the addition of 83 acres of park space to satisfy future populations. In this case, the dog park also was called out, or a dog park was called out as a need within the city based on survey responses. The city then obviously looked at locations and this was one of a few that was discussed and I think is the most fitting, given the size of the site. You'll see in the site plan that it does incorporate a parking area, a small dog area, as well as a large dog area, with the large dog area encompassing the majority of the site. Again, given the B5 zoning, Parkland is a permitted use within that district, but any sort of site plan needs to be approved by this body. There will be no trails initially created, but I'm sure after some use, trails will ultimately become recognizable from patrons utilizing it. The other thing I want to mention is that there is going to be a dog drinking fountain, so the city is going to run a water lateral to the property so that there can be water for dogs to utilize. You'll also notice that there's kind of two phases of the parking lot. One is the initial phase and the other is, you know, if the parking, or if the dog park grows in demand, the parking can grow along with it. So that's been factored in. Any additional parking lot increase would have to come back before this body for another site plan review. So even though it's shown on there, it's just for preliminary purpose. Again, additional asphalt would have to come back before the body. The last thing I want to note is in regards to landscaping. So parking lot landscaping is required as well as frontage landscaping. There are some existing trees that are identified on an existing landscaping plan that can be counted towards the frontage landscaping. And then there are several new crab apple trees and a Kentucky coffee tree that's also being added. And with that, we feel as though it's a good use of property. It's right on the edge of our business park and we would support the use and recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Susan, go ahead.
Question about refus, Kyle. I'm kind of naive about a dog park, but it would seem to me that there would have to be some sort of a trash receptacle. Is there a plan for that?
I believe initially, it'll be roll-off containers. I don't believe we're going to have like a refuse enclosure. I just don't think we'll generate that much traffic. But I believe the Parks Department will be responsible for removing or changing those out. So they'll be smaller containers.
I had a question, Mr. Commissioner. I'm guessing then that kind of answers my question. The Parks Department will oversee long-term maintenance and upkeep?
Correct, yes. It'll be the fall under the Parks Department. The Streets Department has been assisting with tree removal, grubbing. They also cleared the site and I believe compacted some of the soil to get ready for the base and the asphalt. That'll probably happen later this year.
Okay, thanks. Susan? Sorry.
Okay, one more question with regard to the fence. Is the city installing a four-foot cyclone fence on, what, three sides of the property?
I believe the four-foot fence is for the small dog park area. Oh, no, I guess it is. It's for the entirety of it. I know we went back and forth on that because there are city standards regarding the height of fences on or within front yards. So whereas they were going to propose six-foot-high fences on the rear along Oak Street, they were going to set the fence back outside of the setback to do a six-foot-high fence, but I think that must have changed. And yes, they are now requesting a four-foot fence all the way around. I do want to note that the Fire Department did request an emergency gate on that Oak Street side so that in the event that they have to come to a rescue or a fire or anything, they can access it off of Oak Street as well.
Eric? On the parking lot, is that just asphalt? There's a curb and gutter and asphalt?
It'll be asphalt at grade.
Okay. Thank you. All right, what are commission's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve and a second. Go ahead, sir.
I was just wondering if you could tell me that the hours of the park will be open?
That I do not know, but I can certainly look into it with the park supervisor and get back to you.
And then the other thing on the lighting, is the lighting going to be just strictly on the parking lot or are there going to be parts of the park that are going to be lit up?
So the lighting is proposed initially to be lit via some existing poles that Water and Light own. There's actually a utility line that's very close to the property line, so they're going to put a cutoff fixture and face it towards the parking lot. I think if, you know, the parking lot expands into that second phase, there might be some additional lighting that'll be necessary beyond those cutoff fixtures.
Okay. I know the entrance way is real dark down there, so maybe Water and Light would put a street light right on the pole on the street itself for entrance for safety for the people coming and going.
Yeah, and I'm not sure in relation to the pole locations that might be shown on that plan.
Yeah, the existing pole that's right by your entrance right now would meet the criteria and the other pole would work where your small dog park is going to be, so.
Yeah. I would guess that the main one is going to be then on that driveway location.
Good, thank you.
Go ahead, Susan.
One last question. Is this a park and rec, underwritten project? Does this come out of park and rec's budget?
To be determined. I know the mayor's office has also been working on it, so I'm not sure, you know, who's going to be covering the cost or if it's going to be a capital outlay out of parks or contingency or what. Perhaps Ryan or the elders may have more information than I do.
So the comment was it's possibly coming out of park and rec. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. All in favor respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Onto our last item, adjournment. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Have a great evening, everyone.